Good morning, we'll go ahead and call the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners regular meeting on October 6th to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here on this great October. Hopefully everybody had a great weekend, it was beautiful weather, a lot going on in our community. And at this time, I'll go ahead and ask Commissioner Tyson for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand.
Dear gracious heavenly Father, we praise and thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come here and to do the people's business of Cumberland County. We pray that you would guide our steps and our decisions as we go throughout this agenda today, and that you will be amongst us in these proceedings, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and move to the presentation portion of our agenda, and we'll start with fire safety, Cumberland County, fire prevention. County Manager Greer, I'll call on you to present.
Yes, Gary Crumple, our Emergency Services Director, will present a presentation on the fire safety initiatives that we do in the county every year. Gary, good morning. Turn it over to him.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
In line with Fire Prevention Month, I'd like to invite our Fire Marshal Kevin Lauder up to do a presentation on fire prevention, we in Cumberland County, as well as talk about some of our initiatives that we're doing in the county related to fire prevention.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Nice chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, I'm Kevin Lauder, Fire Marshal for Cumberland County Emergency Services. Two main points today that I wanted to bring up was just to acknowledge and recognize this week is Fire Prevention Week. That's consistent throughout the state, and then to provide you with an update of our smoke alarm install program throughout Cumberland County. A lot of people ask, what is Fire Prevention Week? Fire Prevention Week coincides with the great Chicago fire of 1871. This particular fire damaged about $190 million worth of assets through that township back in the day. That's equivalent to about $5 billion today. That's pretty much what the state spent on the entire Hurricane Matthew response, so that's a significant loss within a community. You know, and then it also claimed the lives of 300 people. So, we take Fire Prevention Week very serious, and it always coincides with October 9th, when it happened in Chicago. This year, as every year, we have a theme for Fire Prevention Week, and this year it is Charge Into Fire Safety, with lithium ion batteries in your home being of the present, you know, topic. We have seen a significant increase in lithium ion battery fires throughout the county, you know, particularly how they're stored, and other things that we offer safety programs for the community, they can connect with us, and we can teach them about lithium ion batteries, how they should use them, where they should store them. I would like to add locally, that unattended cooking is still our number one cause of home fires and fatalities in Cumberland County, and that is also across the nation. Like I stated previously, the lithium ion batteries, they are on the rise, so it's something that we're watching very closely, but we are still focusing our efforts very hard on unattended cooking. The biggest thing about this that I can offer is that smoke alarms save lives. No matter what fatality we go to, most of the time, a life is lost in Cumberland County is because they did not have a proper working smoke alarm installed in their home. Some of the fire prevention activities that we do to try to prevent fatalities is doing school visit and community events, and we have our countywide smoke alarm and home safety risk assessment program throughout the county. We do fire station open houses and media outreach, and then partnerships with our schools and our community. On the right side of the slide, you will see a example of a home safety risk assessment. This is about a two-page document, and what that is, is a data approach to what trends we are running in Cumberland County. It can be anything from an emergency management trend to EMS, and it's all the things that our citizens face daily that are, you know, are risks. So, we try to identify these and connect them with a resource that will help them throughout the county. Community risk reduction, how will you connect with us in a resource? This QR code here, if you scan this, will capture the citizen's information, and they can tell us if they need a smoke alarm or a home safety risk assessment. We do that both jointly together. If we do a home safety risk assessment or a smoke alarm evaluation in your home, we will come do those free of charge for you. So, the citizen can visit the Fire Marshal's webpage and get this QR code, or they can click the link directly on the Fire Marshal's webpage of Cumberland County. But if you scan this QR code, you will just enter your information, and then we will schedule a time for a fire station to come out and evaluate your home free of charge. Some updates on our smoke alarm install program, this data is over the last 18 months. We have successfully installed 2,086 smoke alarms throughout Cumberland County, and 122 carbon monoxide alarms. You will notice in the city of Fayetteville portion, there is not a heat map on this side that represents the city of Fayetteville, because they do have their own program that tracks this data, but I can tell you that they're installing at about the same rate that we are, which is anywhere from 100 to 150 smoke alarms a month. So, we're making a significant impact throughout Cumberland County. Over the last 18 months, we have gained $80,000 in grant funding and donations from various local partners. So much, and the program's been so successful that we continue to still run out of smoke alarms. So, one thing that I do want to thank the board for, and our leadership from the county, is approving us the $10,000 line item that we did in FY '26 budget, because that has helped us to bridge a gap so that these citizens do not run out of smoke alarms. So, you know, we really appreciate your effort and your commitment to fire safety in Cumberland County. A few pictures here, this is our Deputy Fire Marshal Jason Wells, doing a smoke alarm evaluation to ensure that the manufacturer date is within its 10 years, and that it's been installed properly. And then some of our local partners with our fire departments, you know, these are all them going out doing installs and, you know, evaluating that they're working properly in the home. In closing, I want to thank multiple folks. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for your commitment to public safety, to our county. I want to thank our county leadership for their support for the resources that they offer us, both monetary to purchase smoke alarms, and their support to reach the public. And then I really want to say a huge thank you to our fire service, because our fire service is boots on the ground, they go out every single day, they knock on doors whether it's rain, shine, and they connect our citizens with resources. And with that, I'd ask, does anyone have any questions?
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Adams.
I just have one question, and this may be for PIO. So, on the CRR, you said it's on the Fire Marshal webpage. Is it on the county website so that they can get to that? Because everybody may not get to that Fire Marshal website. So, if it's on our website, at least to get there, they'll be able to get there or do the QR code off of ours. I don't know if you know that, or whether that's IT or...
Yes.
It is. It's on there? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment just to thank our Fire Marshal for coming and for giving us this great presentation. As the Fire Commissioner, I've seen firsthand the importance of fire prevention, and how key that is to avoid loss of life and property. So, thank you for your dedicated work and what you do for this county.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, other questions or comments? Okay, just, this was for information only. Thank you so much for being here, and we appreciate the update and information.
Sir, thank you.
Thank you to your team. We'll go ahead and move to the recognition portion of the agenda. Cumberland County 911 Reaccreditation Fire Dispatch, I'd like to ask the 911 Division staff to come up to the podium, and I'd like to ask our Fire Commissioner Tyson to the podium. And are you going to do the honors, or you want me to read the honors?
Your pleasure, Chairman.
I'm glad to let you go ahead and make comments around it.
All right, so, good morning again. A pleasure to be in front of you today for another milestone yet again within the Cumberland County 911 Center. Behind me, we have a dedicated group of individuals, just a small portion of our staff that continue to help the citizens of Cumberland County receive the highest tier 911 service that they can get. Within emergency services, there are three divisions within 911, really, to make our operations work. You have the operations, which are the people that are within the 911 Center to actually take the calls. We have, you want me to call you Gail at least? She's representative of that section. Again, they're the people there, day in and day out, taking those hard, those calls, time after time. And then we have our QA, so they review the 911 calls, and help people, or help our floor staff stay in line. Then you have our training, so they train our new telecommunicators as they come into the center. And then we have Christine, and she oversees the show, pretty much, with the exception of the Operations Division. So, there's a lot of hard work, there's a lot of dedication that goes into making our center the way that it is, which is world accredited, 19th in the world, so... So, I'd like to invite Christine up here. Again, she oversees really the training, the quality control, and the accreditation process. She's the one that submits all the documentation to tell a little bit about, about the process.
Good morning, I want to thank you all for having us here. I am Christine Smith, and like the director said, I oversee our training as well as our quality assurance process. There are about 20 different points that go into getting accredited. Like our director stated, there, we were the 19th in the world, but currently, there are only 13 of us still tri-ace accredited. So, it's very hard to maintain as well. There are months and months of data that go into it. We have to meet the highest level of standard. We're only allowed about 7% of our calls to be below a compliant level, and that's super hard to, like, maintain, but we do our hardest, and we work for our citizens. We want to make sure that they have the best, because we believe we are the best. So, we do everything we can to maintain those standards.
Well, before we do that, I just want to see, Commissioners, if you have any comments you'd like to make. Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Always have one. And I do have to applaud, this is in the world, this is, we've done this, and we opened that 911 Center, and y'all worked hard to get that center open and keep it going. It's tremendous the amount of work that you all put into this. You know, nobody sees you out front, we always talk about when they call 911, they just want to know if the telephone's answered, and they get help, and you all do that on a daily basis. So, I just want to say thank you and applaud you for everything that you do, and that reaccreditation is tremendous. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Tyson, you want to go ahead and present the award and make comments?
I just wanted to say thank to each and every one of y'all for your hard work and dedication. As we know, there's been a robust conversation about our 911, and you guys are our first response in any emergency crisis. And so, I know without y'all, the Sheriff's Office, the Fire Department, EMS, they couldn't do what they do. So, thank y'all so much for your dedication to this county, and I know the residents of this county really appreciate y'all very much.
With that big old... Step around. Go ahead, there you go. Gary's trying to hide. Thank you, stand up on that. And again, to the team, just congratulations, it's a huge accomplishment, and very timely as we're talking about how we can work in a joint way with other municipalities in our community for 911. So, thank you for all y'all do every day, we appreciate the commitment to our community, and as Commissioner Adams said, kind of the unseen that make it happen every day. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Chair.
At this time, we'll go ahead and move to Item 2, Approval of the Agenda. I'll first ask County Manager Greer if there's any changes to the agenda.
One change to the agenda, Chairman DeVeere, we would like to move Item 4A, Consideration of a Proactive Contract, take it off of this agenda and move it to the Agenda 6, the October 9th Agenda Session.
So, Item 5A, we're going to pull Item 5A?
4A.
4A. Why does mine say 5? Okay, 4A, item, we're going to pull the item of business, Consideration Proactive Contract.
No other changes.
Commissioners, any, any changes to the agenda? Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take a moment, a personal privilege, just to recognize that we do have our Sheriff, Jonathan Morgan, here in attendance, and if the Chairman and the rest of the board doesn't have an objection, I just wanted to see if he wanted to take a few minutes to address the Commission.
Commissioner Tyson, we're going to move through the approval of the agenda, I'd plan to recognize the Sheriff.
Okay.
At the appropriate time, I appreciate your personal privilege, I have a order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I want to go ahead and move through this approval agenda. Do you have a proclamation you'd like to add, Commissioner Tyson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I am requesting that we add a proclamation for firefighter and EMS Memorial Day, and that that be added to the consent agenda.
Yeah, there's a copy of it. Commissioners, you should have a copy of it at your, at your seat. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
Chairman, I am requesting to add a proclamation for the DiVole Festival to the consent agenda.
Commissioners, any, anything else? From the Chair, I'd like to move Item 6, well, 5K, which is part of the nomination appointments, but it's actually not a nomination, it's an appointment, and just move that down to our appointments, to Item 6. So, Item K, which is a local emergency planning committee Chair and Vice Chair, is an appointment, we're not nominating anything, so move that down to the appointments section as an item. And then, I'd also ask that we go ahead and take action on Item 7, for any appointments from the nominations that we have today, that do not have any floor nominations, or, and the list of nominees is not greater than the vacancies. So, we're going to make nominations today in Section 5. What I'd like to do is if there's no floor nominations, and the nominations do not exceed the number of vacancies, that we go ahead and move those items to the appointments, and move, and vote on those today, and to make it a little bit more efficient as we move forward with our boards and commissions. Any questions on any of those, Commissioners? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda by Sheriff Jones.
Motion for approval of the agenda?
Second. We've got a motion to approve the agenda with the changes recommended by the manager and Commissioners, then properly seconded. Is there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move forward to the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask to pull 2G.
Hearing none, entertaining a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Second. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, it's properly seconded, with the removal of Item G. Are there any questions on that motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And before we move forward to the public hearing, I'd like to go ahead and do another presentation of a proclamation that was just approved. So, I would ask Major Reyes if he'd come forward to the, to the podium. And I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and we appreciate you being here and receiving this proclamation. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September 15th through October 15th each year, and whereas Cumberland County looks forward to celebrating with the community to highlight the rich heritage, arts, history, food, music, and tradition of all 26-plus Latin American nations, and whereas we understand that these nations are not magnanimous, and these, and this month celebrates honors and pays tributes to all of their contributions to our community. And whereas celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month provides an opportunity to recognize the contributions of the Hispanic community that add to the diversity and vitality of Cumberland County by building the culture and economy through entrepreneurships, arts, agriculture, education, healthcare, services, and beyond. Now therefore, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim that September 15th through August, excuse me, October 15th, 2025, shall be designated and set aside as Hispanic Heritage Month in Cumberland County, North Carolina, and call upon residents to celebrate the traditions and contributions of our Hispanic residents. Adopted this sixth day of October, 2025, signed Kirk J. DeVeere, Chairman, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Bring this down to you. Congratulations. Should have made me do Spanish. Commissioners, any questions or any comments on that before we move forward? Okay, we'll go ahead and move forward to the public hearing. Item 3, and I'll call on County Manager Greer to read the Board Rules and Procedures for Public Hearings.
Yes, the public hearing procedures are as follows. Arguments by the proponents and opponents should be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes per each side. If there's no group representative, each speaker will be, shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time period is attained. rebuttals will only be permitted at the discretion of the Chairman of a maximum of one 10, one 3-minute presentation by each side.
Go ahead, County Manager, if you'll go ahead and introduce the item. We'll have a public hearing on economic development incentives for Project Superman, if you'll introduce the item and the presenter.
Yes, we have one public hearing on economic development incentives for Project Superman. Robert Van Geens, Fayetteville, Cumberland County Economic Development Corporation Executive Director will present this item and answer any questions you may have. This will provide, increase the tax base about $22 million over the next five years, if approved, and the average wage will be $66,700. And I'll turn it over to Robert to present and answer any questions you may have.
Well, good morning, appreciate this opportunity. I do not see the PowerPoint in front of y'all on the screen, but I believe I can cover it without pretty pictures. This is Project Superman, as the County Manager said. Our request today is that you hold a public hearing to consider approving incentives for this project, this project, in keeping with that, your general guidelines, this will be a five-year declining incentive, not to exceed $363,050.
Mr. Menke, real quick, just Commissioners, it is, the deck is in your agenda packet, so you've got it on your iPads or screens.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is an existing... This is an existing company with locations in multiple states of which we are competing against for this project. They currently employ 58. They do manufacture steel products. They have locations in Virginia and South Carolina. This would develop a 75-acre undeveloped tract, add additional 42 full-time employees with an average salary around $66,700. Just for the spread on those, so folks can be aware, they range between roughly $60,000 to $80,000, so all the jobs are within that, that, that solid range, and $22 million investment in new buildings and equipment. The way your, this grant would work is that for each year of the five, they would receive a grant, assuming they may meet the job creation and the wages, that would be calculated on a declining percentage each year. Important for everyone to know, as it always is with the projects we do, in no year would their grant exceed the amount of new tax revenue paid. So, they will pay their full boat of new taxes, and then the grant, which is based in part on a portion of that, would then go back to them each year for the five. Over the life of the project, you would, we projected on a 10-year basis, you'd receive $876,000 in new revenue on the current tax rate. You'd pay incentives of $363,000, and you'd retain over $500,000 in new revenue. And again, each year they must perform in order to receive the incentive. Would that have taken any questions now or after the public hearing? Should you like, and if agreeable, after the public hearing, we request approval of these incentives.
Commissioners, questions for, on this project? Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a moment, Mr. Van Gheens, and tell you how much we appreciate the hard work that you and your team do to bring projects in like this, and this is a great opportunity, and, and I think it's something that we should look to support as we look to move our county forward. And just one quick question, we know that kryptonite's a regulated substance. Can you assure us that none will be produced on this site?
Yes, I, I have gone through all my kryptonian records, and I believe that we, that it's only in western North Carolina where we find those deposits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tyson, for bringing levity to a meeting. Any other questions before I open the public hearing? All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll ask commissioners if there are any other questions or comments on this project. Hearing none. I'm going to give, we'll, we'll stand in place for a second while I give Ms. Counsel a minute to get seated. All right. At this time, we've received the information on Project Superman. Existing fable company, currently employs 58, additional 42 full-time employees, $22 million investment. Note, we've opened and closed the public hearing. No other questions at this time. I'll entertain a motion, Vice Chairwoman Jones.
I make a motion that we move to approval of the incentive offer to accordance with our county policy that includes an incentive grant not to exceed $363,500, and we will, which will be paid over five years supported by the company investment that increases the tax base by $22 million over five years creation of 42 full-time jobs with an average wage exceeding $66,700.
Second. We have a motion to approve the incentives for Project Superman not to exceed $363,500 over a five-year period. That's been properly seconded. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing no questions, I'll entertain your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And Madam Clerk, you reflected that Commissioner Counsel is present. We'll go ahead and move now to item four, items of business, and we have one item moved from the consent, approval of budget ordinance amendments for October 6, 2025. County Manager Greer, I'm calling you to present the item.
Mr. Chairman.
Unless you want to just direct.
I just have, I, I've got just a question, just two questions. I'm not going through the whole contingency. I'm down to the very end, to the contingency fund report. I know we talked about the unhoused, so that one's fine with me, but this contract that was personnel for the court system, because we talked about the unhoused in the agenda session, we've never talked about this. I don't even know what this is, never seen this contract, don't know any of the provisions of this contract, and it wasn't in any of the stuff that we got. So, I'm, I'm kind of perplexed of what that is and how, where, how we do this.
So, Commissioner Adams, I'll, I'll let County Manager Greer talk to that. That's, you're specifically talking about General Fund 101, which is contingency funds?
Yes.
That the county manager has approval over contingency funds. So, County Manager, I'll let you address that.
Yes, back in August, we received, Commissioner Adams, a request from Superior Court regarding the coordinator, contracted coordinator position. Over the last, due to this, the state budget, they were not able to, they've been in some holding pattern regarding to this contracted position. We talked with the AOC, trying to get them to fund the position because Superior Court said they needed it. When talking with them, they said they would be able to reimburse us after the fact that we contracted. Based on approval authority, I said, well, let me see if I can help you out. It's only for one year, and we should get reimbursed, and it only starts on October 1st, and it's $56,250 over this fiscal year. I don't anticipate this being a one-year thing, a one-year to help out the Superior Court system, and then they will take it over again once the state approves the budget in fiscal year 26, 27.
Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Well, this, but they haven't gotten a budget. So, I guess the contract, because we usually see the contract, and it goes through legal for approval, or I guess it went through legal so that we, I mean, I, so if AOC doesn't get the money, how do we get reimbursed? I, I, that's what I want, I hadn't seen the contract, and so, we don't know what the contract provisions are. I guess legal's seen it and is satisfied with legal sufficiency of it.
Wait, wait, hold on, Mr. Attorney. So, County Manager, this is a professional services contract, correct?
Yes.
So, and that's within your scope, and those professional services contract, under, under a certain amount, normally do not come back to the board for review. They're legally reviewed, correct?
Yes, but if it's the pleasure of the board, I will bring those forward in the future.
County, Mr. Attorney, have you reviewed the personal services contract? Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Well, and, and that's just, I just want to be clear, because if it doesn't have to come back, why is it on this consent agenda? Just do it. I mean, it's no reason for, for us to go through this. Either we got to approve it or we don't. If it's one I think that you can do on your own, there's really no reason for it to be on, and then stick on the consent agenda, so I, I don't understand, I guess.
So, Commissioner Adams, this is part of the, the budget amendments that have to come forward, and so anytime there's contingency funds and changes to the contingency funds, that has to be through the budget amendment. So, these two items were used in the contingency fund, so they have to be part of the budget amendment. That was brought through finance, that was brought, and then to this board as part of the amendment. It's not the contract, it's the use of the funds. Correct me if I'm wrong, County Manager.
Yeah, anytime that I have to use contingency for anything, I have to bring it to the board for the budget approval.
And I don't have a problem with that.
You recognize, Commissioner Adams.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a problem with that. I'd just like to see the contract. I mean, you know, we 56, what are we, what are we doing? Where is it going? What's it do? Those are the provision. I think that's what we do here. You got to at least tell us that, at least, I would like to know, you know, why we do that and where it goes and how it does and for that, because I, like, the hotel charges, we talked about that in the agenda session. And so, I understand that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Commissioner Adams, I understand you'd like to, you'd like to just see a copy of the, of the agreement, which, as a commissioner, you have rights, you have the ability to do that. I don't know if we want to set a precedent to review every contract that the manager signs within his discretion, within his authority as the CEO of the organization. But, Mr. Manager, if we can make sure we get Commissioner Adams a
Will do.
A copy of that, of that contract.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I don't
You recognize, Commissioner Adams.
With that, I don't have a problem, and I would, you know, move to approve all of that with that provision.
Second. We have a motion, we have a motion to approve the budget ordinance amendments for October 6, 2025. It's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion or questions on the motion or the item? Because I didn't continue discussion on the item.
Well, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Vice Chairman Jones, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the listening audience and for others out there, again, can you just restate the contingency funds, the amount, please? Kind of got lost in discussion. I see it, but I would like for our public to know, can you have the manager do that in regards to what the cover of the contract, personal costs would be and all the other amendments, so that everyone can understand the following for the total funding is number one, and then that of what the other costs would be? I would appreciate that, so that our public can understand those factors, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Where the contingency, the total is $94,000 used, $94,100. Contingency funds were used to cover the cost of hotel, $37,751 to cover hotel costs for unhoused citizens of Cumberland County during the first part of the fiscal year, July, August of this fiscal year, and then the contingency funds of 56,250 that we just discussed for coordinator for to help the court system, Superior Court specifically.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Manager.
Any other questions or comments on the motion or the item? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item five, nominations. Just as a reminder of the new process established earlier this year, we have two nominations and appointment periods. A committee, a boards and commission, boards and commissions committee has been formed. They review the applicants and make recommendations to the board. Nominations, commissioners can propose individuals from various boards and commissions, including nominations from the floor during the meeting. Any floor nominations are required to fill out applications before the following month's board meeting, and no later than, in this case, October 24th, or deemed ineligible for the cycle. On Thursday, September 25th, the Boards and Commissions Committee, consisting of Chairman Devier, Vice Chairman Jones, Commissioner Counsel, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Tyson, met to discuss the nominations for the boards and commissions. Commissioner Counsel was not present. The committee reviewed all previous applicants and new applicants. The board will reconvene on Thursday, October 9th, to finalize nominations where additional information or board action was required prior to nomination. These will be moved forward to the October 20th meeting for nomination and appointment. The boards and commission received additional nominations during the October 20th meeting. We'll move to the November 3rd, 2025 meeting for appointments. This timeframe allows for applicants to be, applications to be completed and processed. Boards and commissions that do not receive additional nominations are requested to be appointed at the 20th, October 20th, 25 meeting. And before we start the process, just want to make, make sure there aren't any questions on the process or what's happened to date. At this time, I'll go ahead and ask Vice Chairman Jones to read the nominations for each of the boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the Board of Adjustment, regular member as follows, Donald Brooks for reappointment, Veronica Mitchell, Roshier, Roshier, moved from alternate to regular full-time member, alternate members, Joseph Stefan and Christine Walksham.
Board, are there any additional nominations from the floor? And without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. We'll go ahead and move to the next one.
Board of Health, physician, Dr. Nitin Desai, I want to make sure I pronounce that right, for Apmatricius. Desai, excuse me. Apmatricius, Dr. Joseph Ballard for general public representatives, Dr. Sam Fleishman, and Jamaica Hamilton.
Board, are there any additional nominations from the floor?
Yes, I would like to make an additional nomination at this time for Melissa Bostic and Cynthia Massey.
And those are for the general public representation?
That is correct.
Commissioners, any other nominations from the floor?
Could I ask for those names to be repeated, please?
Melissa B O S T I C and Cynthia Massey for the, in reference to for the Board of Health. Bostic, sorry.
Commissioners, any other nominations from the floor? Without objection, the named nominees will move forward to the October 20th meeting for appointment. And Madam Clerk, if you'll ensure that these two added individuals receive the application and go through the process.
Yes, sir.
We'll go ahead and move to the next item, Joint Planning Board.
Joint Planning Board nominees, James Baker for reappointment, and Lyndale Ray Jenkins.
Commissioners, are there any other nominations? And Board, without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. We're going to move to the next item, or the next commission board, Farm Advisory Board.
Nominees for the Farmers Advisory Board, David Gillis, Craig Tyson, Mark Williams for reappointment.
Commissioners, are there any other nominees, nominations? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. We'll go ahead and move to the next committee, local, or no, excuse me, local emergency planning committee.
Nominees for the local emergency planning committee are as follows. Lou Sherry for Cumberland PIO Broadcast Media Representative for reappointment, George White, Womack Army Medical Center Representative for reappointment, Amy Mento, Local Environmental Representative for reappointment, and Louis Furman, Cumberland County Sheriff's Office Representative. At-large representatives, one vacancy, Brian Crankover and Dino Andrews. Facility representatives, out of county, out of county nominees, there's five vacancies. Raymond Bet, Fratton Industries Representative, Terry Chalk, Goodwood Facility Representative, Daniel Davis, Hexon Facility Representative, Micah Jones, Carly Facility Representative, and Carson Walker for South River EMC Facility Representative.
Commissioners, are there any additional nominations from the floor? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will, Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to nominate Teddy Warner for consideration as one of the at-large representatives, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, other nominations from the floor? Board, without objection, the named nominees will move to the October 20th meeting for an appointment vote, and Madam Clerk, if you'll ensure that Teddy Warner has the information to, for the application. We're going to move to the, the next Board and Commission, Library Board of Trustees.
Here are three vacancies for Library Board of Trustees. The nominees, Gloria Nelson for reappointment, Sabrina Stuckelman, and Brian Taylor.
Commissioners, are there any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, Board without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. We'll go ahead and move to the next Board, Mid-Carolina Workforce Development Board.
Mid-Carolina Work
Mid-Carolina Workforce Development Board, there is one vacancy, the name of that one nominee, Elizabeth Shivers.
Commissioners, are there any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in Item 7 of this meeting. We're going to move to the next one, Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council.
Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council, there are four vacancies, Veterans Affairs Representative, a nominee, Autumn Oxidein, Consumers Representatives, three nominees, Willie McCoy, Sonya Cooper, and Charles McLaurin.
Commissioners, are there any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in Item 7 of this meeting. We'll move to the next Board, North Carolina Southeast Board of Directors.
For the North Carolina Southeast Board of Directors, there's one vacancy, that nominee's name is Mark Schroes.
Commissioners, are there any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in Item 7 of this meeting. We'll go ahead and now move to the next one, Tourism Development Authority.
Tourism Development Authority, there are three current vacancies, the names for the nominees, Hotel Motels, over one hundred rooms representatives, Naenich Matea for reappointment, Hotel Motels, under one hundred rooms representatives, Commissioner Pavin Patel for reappointment, and Auntie Travad for reappointment.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
If I can recuse myself from this vote?
Takes Board action, correct, Mr. Attorney?
I didn't hear, what would you ask?
If I can recuse myself from that vote?
Yes, it would take Board action.
Commissioners, I'd ask for, I'll put it this way, without objection, Commissioner Patel is recused from vote on the Tourism Development Authority. Okay, we'll go ahead. Commissioners, are there any floor nominations? Vice Chairman Jones, you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move to approve an exception to policy to allow appointment, if selected, for a third term for Commissioner Pavin Patel, serving in the Hotel Motels, under one hundred room representative role.
Second the motion. We have a second for approval for exception to policy for the appointment for a third term, if selected, for Commissioner Patel. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, unanimous, with Commissioner Patel being excused.
Are there any additional floor nominations for the Tourism Development Authority? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in Item 7 of this meeting. We'll go ahead and move to the next item, or, excuse me, the next committee, Joint Fayetteville, Cumberland County Human Relations.
There are three vacancies for the Joint Fayetteville, Cumberland County Human Relations Committee, nominees are as follows, Rachel Address, Frederick Cutter, Johnny Loetheren, Brian Meadows, and Jean Saint.
Commissioners, are there any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move to the October 20th meeting for an appointment vote. And that concludes our nominations. We'll go ahead and move to appointments. The adjusted agenda, Item A, is a Local Emergency Planning Committee Chair and Vice Chair appointments. Vice Chairman, if you can read those appointments.
Yes, for the Chair position, Commissioner Henry Tyson, Vice Chair, Daniel Davis.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would ask that I be excused and recuse myself from voting on this item as well.
Without objection, Commissioner Tyson is recused from vote on this item. Are there any other questions or comments on this appointment? Hearing none, Vice Chairman Jones, I entertain a motion.
Yes, I entertain a motion to move to appoint Commissioner Henry Tyson as chairman and Daniel Davis as vice chair for the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
There are a motion on the floor to appoint the Chair and Vice Chair of the Local Emergency Planning Committee, it's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous with Commissioner Tyson recused.
We'll go ahead now and move to Item B, which is the appointments of Boards and Commission. This is the approval, the appointments from the nominations presented in Item 6, that do not have any floor nominations and no contested seats. That list is Board of Adjustments, Joint Planning Board, Farm Advisory Board, Library Board of Trustees, Mid-Carolina Workforce Development Board, Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council, North Carolina Southeast Board of Directors, and Tourism Development Authority.
Move to approve those appointments.
And, real quick, Madam Clerk, I didn't miss any, did I?
No. Human Relations work will move to the 20th?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We've got a motion on the floor to approve the appointments, have been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to, or, excuse me, I'll ask for your vote. Please raise your right hand and approval.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, and just upon a clarification, even though the appointments, I know y'all recused yourself on the nominations, do y'all want to recuse yourself on the appointment because you raised your hand on those? So, just for Commissioner Tyson and Commissioner Patel, I just, you know, just for...
Commissioner, as a, just clearing. Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe in the list you called out, you did not mention the Local Emergency Planning Committee, so that's why I went ahead and voted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For future reference, I understand why our commissioners wanted to recuse themselves, but there are specific general statutes under which we can do that, and I don't think this really applies in this case. I don't think these gentlemen have any pecuniary interest, or neither do their families or anything here in these cases. So, to prevent time being spent on this, I think we need to consider not doing that in the future unless there is a statutory reason to do it. And the attorney can comment, because I see...
Attorney, you're recognized.
There was no conflict with either of these.
I didn't think so.
Commissioner Patel. All right, the vote stands, we're not going to make any changes at this time. We'll go ahead and move to Item 8, closed session, and I'll call on Vice Chairman Jones for a motion.
I'm making a motion that we move to go into closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3, also personal matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A6.
Second. We've got a motion that's been seconded to go into closed session for attorney-client matters and personnel matter, it's been properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion, I will entertain approval. I'll ask for your vote on approval. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we're in closed session. Sheriff, my apologies, we did not recognize you earlier.
I'll go ahead and call for a motion to come out of closed session. By Sherwin Jones.
Motion to come out of closed session in reference to attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A3 and also personal matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A6.
Second.
We have a motion to come out of closed session, properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
unanimous.
And there were no items or actions to address from the closed session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
So moved.
Second. We've got a motion to adjourn that's properly seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand.
unanimous.
And we're adjourned.